Welcome, we'll call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us, we're very excited to celebrate a number of scholars out there. And with that, we will get started with roll call, Mrs. Knowles?
Yes, all board members are present and we have a quorum.
Wonderful, if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, Dr. Wall is going to lead us this evening to celebrate his birthday which is tomorrow.[66.06][66.06](Laughter) We're going to begin with our recognition of Mr. Bob Yule, and Dr. Wall is going to lead us in our presentations this evening.
We're very fortunate to have Bob back with us, and the presentation night is actually from Synergistic, so if I could have Bob Yule and Robert Davis from Synergistic come forward. We recognize Bob upon his retirement as our energy educator, and Bob, you did a great job and we miss you, and it looks like retirement's treating you very well.
Very well.[133.16][133.16](Laughter)
But this evening, the mic belongs to Mr. Robert Davis. Synergistic originally was energy education in its genesis. Carmel Clay Schools were insightful under Rogers' leadership to bring in an energy management program to really do cost avoidance on utilities so that we could use those resources for student programs, and to take care of our great teachers and students of Carmel Clay Schools. It is now called Synergistic, and with that, Robert, I'm going to let you introduce the award for Bob tonight.
Thank you, Danke, I appreciate it. Synergistic is an energy conservation company, it's about to celebrate our 30th anniversary. Carmel Clay has been in the program going on 21 years now. One of the things that I noticed as president for the Midwest and Northeastern United States last year was that Bob Yule was the energy specialist in your district for 20 years. If you think about that, he's been your energy specialist longer than your oldest students have been born. And did a phenomenal, phenomenal job during that time period, and he was so wonderful working with all of our engineers that came into the district throughout those years, heck, he probably taught some of them some things. So, on behalf of Dr. Bill Spears, who is our founder and chairman of the board, I wanted to present this plaque to Bob tonight, and it says, "Your dedication to the energy program has saved Carmel Clay Schools over $17 million in 20 years, honoring 20 years of excellence and grateful appreciation for your hard work, loyalty, and leadership." So Bob, on the behalf of everyone at Synergistic, I want to thank you very, very much.[244.12][244.12](Applause)
You want to say something, Bob?
I appreciate this from Synergistic, they were really great to work with. The first three years, not so much, when they would come, they would come, they would come at three in the morning and want to go around to the schools, and then you'd have to teach that day, then they'd want to go around at nine at night, that same night. But anyways, that's okay.[282.94][282.94](Laughter)
That's how you get the savings.
That's how we saved the money. And it was, it was great after we got over that. So, working with all the people here, and Roger, and you've been great, and I just appreciate the board's help over the years, and thank you.[310.12][310.12](Applause)
As Leila said, we have a number of scholars we want to recognize this evening, national merit semifinalists are with us. I want to thank the parents for being here this evening, and the students themselves, I know you have a very busy schedule, and many of you are probably foregoing some homework right now, so thank you for taking time to be with us, the family effort to get to this level. And Mr. John Williams is with us this evening to announce, and when your name is called, come up, and I'll present you with a certificate, and please stay up here, and then after we're done presenting all certificates, we'll applaud and recognize, and then the board would like to, and administration would like to congratulate you as well on your accomplishment. John?
Thank you, Dr. Wall, and to the board. This has become a fall tradition of my pleasure to join you and introduce to you these outstanding scholars. And Dr. Wall, I would tell you that they are not foregoing their homework, they'll just be doing it after we're all in bed, as they usually do. So, anyway, we are very proud to introduce our 45 national merit semifinalists. As you know, this is an amazing accomplishment, based upon their junior year PSAT score, puts these students in the top one-half of 1% of the over 1.5 million students who take the PSAT. It's a remarkable accomplishment for them individually and their families, one that they should be proud of, but it's also something that their school is very proud of them, and their district is very proud of them. And I won't be able to say this, but as their names are read, and actually, I'm not going to read their names anyway, but if I was, I couldn't tell you, but what you'll see is these folks come up, they're not only great in the classroom, but they're leaders in our school, they're involved in our co and extracurriculars, and they have truly bought into what a public education is. So we're very, very proud of them. At this time, I'd like to introduce Melinda Stefan, our college and career coordinator, counselor, and she will read their names, and as Dr. Wall says, guys that's come up, get your certificate, and then stand up here and we'll get a picture. So, thank you.
Dr. Wall, members of the board and members of the community, I am most pleased to introduce to you the Carmel High School National Merit semifinalist for the class of 2016, Miriam Michael Chang.[495.02][495.02](Applause) Aiman Gupta.[568.82][568.82](Applause) Samantha Hunter.[587.66][587.66](Applause) Alexander Jolly.[593.41][593.41](Applause) Michael Lee.[621.54][621.54](Applause) Emma Love.[661.87][661.87](Applause) Vikas Mathuri.[667.62][667.62](Applause) Ellen Peng.[696.54][696.54](Applause) Joseph So.[747.04][747.04](Applause) Erin Shi.[762.37][762.37](Applause) Olivia Wang.[818.75][818.75](Applause) Tiffany Sia.[837.75][837.75](Applause) Alex Yam.[843.75][843.75](Applause) Cynthia Yu.[849.45][849.45](Applause) And Matthew Zhang.[855.62][855.62](Applause) These are your class of 2016 national merit semifinalists.[863.12][863.12](Applause)
Okay, I'm going to move you all back this way gradually, towards Mr. Williams and I, come on this way, because then you can line up and be recognized by the Board of Education. I appreciate it. You want to say? (Inaudible) (Laughter) 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 (Inaudible) Okay. We have a very special spotlight on excellence this evening, and it is the Davidson Fellow in Science Award recipient from Carmel High School. John, are you doing the honors this evening?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Again, thank you, Dr. Wall, and before we move on, I think we need to give a round of applause to Melinda Stefan, the counselor, what a great job reading those names.[982.04][982.04](Applause) It is my pleasure to recognize Carmel High School senior Shreya Vamuri, if she could please join me up here. Shreya was recently, as Dr. Wall announced, she was recently named a 2015 Davidson Fellows. The Davidson Institute of Talent Development recognizes a mere 20 students across the country for this honor. Shreya won a $25,000 Davidson Scholarship for her project, which is titled, "The Effect of Time-Dependent Gain and Loss in a PT-Symmetric Lattice." Yeah, she and I talked about that.[1025.25][1025.25](Laughter) But I'm going to let her explain it to you.
What was that again?
Shreya is truly a product of the Carmel Clay Schools. She took the challenge programs in our elementary school, took honors math and honors language arts courses in middle school, and going into her senior year had taken advantage of 10 of our advanced placement courses. So she's an outstanding student, very ambitious, and we're very, very proud to recognize her as the Davidson Fellow Award winner, Davidson. Shreya, would you like to say a few words?[1060.54][1060.54](Applause)
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and good evening, everyone. So as Mr. Williams said, I received the Davidson Award for the research that I've been conducting for the past two years. So I studied the way that light travels through optical fibers, and discovered novel methods by which we can make communications and calculations much faster. So in particular, my work has applications in optical communications, which can streamline signals, in quantum computing, which are computers that can do calculations much faster than computers today can, and in quantum cryptography, which plays an important role in cybersecurity systems. So I'm very grateful to the Davidson Foundation for this award, and I appreciate the support from my mentor, Professor Yogesh Joglikar of IUPUI. I'm also appreciative of the Carmel Clay Schools for supporting my education for all these years, and specifically, I'd like to thank Mrs. Michener and Mr. James for sparking my interest in math and physics. Lastly, I'd like to thank the school board and Mr. Williams for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Congratulations to all of our scholars, we are very excited that you've joined us this evening, and we wish you the very best of luck as you continue on your national merit journey. I know there's a lot of paperwork, and you will all be in the big pool to be national merit scholars instead of semifinalists, so we wish you the very, very best. At this time, we will take a brief recess and allow you an opportunity to leave for your studies, unless you want to join us for the rest of the evening. With that, and do we need any pictures?
We could, you want, Jennifer will meet you in B?
You too? Is it B2 or?
B3.
B3.
It's behind the reception area.
If you would quickly meet in B3, which is behind the reception area, Jennifer's going to snap a picture of all of our national merit semifinalists that are here, and with that, like I said, we wish you the very best of luck. Congratulations.[1218.75][1218.75](Applause)
(Inaudible) 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 Okay. Moving right along, our next item on the agenda, since we do not have anyone wishing to participate in public participation, is going to be consent. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the adoption of the 2016 budgets, the Capital Projects Fund Plan, and the 12-year bus replacement plan. And with that, we'll turn to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. At the September 28 meeting, these budgets and plans were presented to the board and to the public in a public hearing, so the next step in the process is for the boards to, our recommendation is to adopt these budgets and these two plans.
Thank you, Roger. May I get a motion on the table to approve the recommendation for the budgets?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have the change orders, the chiller replacement at Smokey Row and roof replacement at Mohawk Trails. To that, we turn to Roger.
Thank you. Both of these are essentially closeout, deduct change orders, and we would recommend both of those for your approval.
May I get a motion on the table to approve the change order savings?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
So, this is contingency, it's just coming back?
Yes, the project, a project like both of these will have a contingency allowance for, in the event that they find things that were unforeseen in the bid specifications, and in this case, not all of that contingency was needed, so it comes back to us.
Thank you, Roger. Other questions or comments? This is probably a large assumption, but I think it's accurate, this money goes then back to the Capital Project Fund?
Yes, or I believe these, one of these may have, or maybe both of them were funded from bond proceeds, but it would come back from where the project's being paid from.
Okay. That sounds great. Any other questions? All in favor of supporting this cost savings, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
And moving right along, we have additional appropriations, which we turn to Dr., or Mr. McMichael for that as well.
Yes, our budgets for 2015 for development, summer of 2014, and since that time, we've had some expenses changed. Remembering this personnel cost, and so we're recommending additional appropriation process, that's no impact, that's variable, we already had, appropriation is a, we need to. (Inaudible)
Thank you, Roger. May I get a motion on the table to approve the additional appropriations of the funds?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Kathy?
We're not approving them, we're just going for a public hearing, is that what we're doing?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So do we need to change the motion to be for?
To advertise for public.
Right, because I thought, yeah.
I'll take back mine.
(Laughter)
I have a comment.
Please.
Roger, is this, can you just speak a little bit about the timing on this? Is this typical timing of this appropriate, type of appropriation?
It is. When this budget was built, we didn't have funding for it yet, so once we received that funding, we knew how much additional money we were receiving, that's primarily what we like to hear, having received additional funding.
At that point, we proceeded to either settle contracts or provide salary adjustments for other employees, and so we typically come to the board with an additional appropriation like this at this time, because, one, we want to get relatively far into the budget year, and our budget's on a calendar year basis, because now, after this step, then it'll be another meeting before we will have a hearing on the process, and then we must send this to the state for their, for the state's approval, and they have 15 days to approve it, so by the time we go through all of that, we're getting close to the holiday
Thank you, Dr. Dudley, and I'd also like to comment, I appreciate the background information. It is very comprehensive, and it certainly does answer a number of questions, should anybody have any. With that, may I get a motion on the table to approve the course changes for 2016-17?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Wonderful. Next, we turn to the superintendent's report, Dr. Wall.
I'm having to highlight this evening, I just wanted to kind of give a prelude to Tricia. We're sending out our invitations this week to schedule meetings with our legislative representatives, and Tricia and I will get those on the calendar and move forth accordingly. Look forward to that.
Well, excellent. Thank you very much, Dr. Wall, and we look forward to getting feedback from the two of you on how we can best support you in our endeavors with the legislative initiatives. And with that, we'll turn to Tricia, who's going to give us a legislative update.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Kathy and I were able to attend the ISBA, or Indiana School Board Association, October 15 Region Five meeting, and at that meeting, they included a legislative update from ISBA's perspective, and I think Mike was able to attend a different region meeting. So that was really informative. So what I've done is I've taken their legislative update and I've kind of overlaid it on our CCS legislative priorities, and I just want to update on a few little things here. And so Jennifer has positioned that, so it'll hit all my points, I think, here. Goal number one, funding. If you look at F, it has to do with make permanent the ability to pay utilities and certain insurance from the Capital Projects Fund. We found out at the regional meeting that the legislature is currently, already has a committee that's looking into solution for this, and in the meantime, it was noted that some districts have been, a couple districts have been exceedingly allowable, funds collected from the CPF, not Carmel, Carmel double checks their compliance, but the executive director of ISBA just informed us that we should look for probably a multifaceted solution to this, one part having to do with district self-policing for compliance, and then another part having to do with really fixing this issue. And then if you look at goal number two there, student testing, there should be greater focus on benchmark testing during the school year, which is formative testing over so much of the end-of-year testing, which is a summative testing. This was not brought up at ISBA, but I've heard, I read this morning, I've heard today, and you might have too, that President Obama has denounced actually the proliferation of testing in the classroom and across the USA, and has recommended limiting standardized testing to no more than 2% of a student's classroom instructional time. So we'll have our eye on how our Republican, mostly Republican representatives take that advice and where they go, because it fits right into this legislative priority. And then back to the ISBA update. Goal number three, having to do with transportation. If you look at number one, or sorry, number, letter A, improve the language regarding protected levy in relation to property tax cap losses and their predicted negative impact on transportation operating funds. At the regional meeting, we heard that the legislature plans on correcting this area at the next long session, which is in 2017. So the good news is that this has already gotten some traction, and, but really won't be, because it has to do with some money issues, won't, they don't look to fix it in the short session. So when Nick and I meet with our legislators and other government decision-makers, we know how to frame our conversation, that this is, this process is starting, but a solution isn't right around the corner. And then B, under goal three, modify the current language of Indiana Code 2027111, so that public schools are not put in an untenable legal position to try to determine a safe drop-off point when transporting charter or private school students. Just as a little bit of a background, legislation last year expanded the definition of this process to include a safe drop-off for any non-public school student transported by public school transportation. ISBA has already drafted legislation which addresses this, and they've included language that states that there be no different drop-offs would be required for non-public school students than for public school students, so that everyone would be treated the same, and that would be their proposed legislation, and ISBA is also currently working with a few legislators to determine who will carry this bill. They haven't determined the exact person yet, but they're nearing down that, so this area's gotten a lot of traction. And as Nick noted, that our letters to our legislators, our emails will go out in the next day or two or three, so it's right around the corner there, and we'll keep you posted on that. I'd like to also take this time to give you just a brief update on the State School Data Reporting Committee. Sometimes our efforts there start down this direction, and then as we're waiting for someone to come and give us information, and we go down this direction and then that direction, so it's a little convoluted at times, so I won't be reporting on that as much as I will our legislative priorities, but now is a good time to get you up to date, I guess. To date, the committee's passed on three recommendations, and we pass them on to the State Board of Education, is what we do. To date, the State Board of Ed has approved two of those and is waiting for the presentation on the third, it hasn't been put on their agenda yet. Of the two that have been approved, one would need a statute change by the legislature, so that one will go down that process. All these three recommendations have to do with reports, or portions of reports, that, which are outdated, duplicative, or overly burdensome. And, then I lost my place, oh, we're also working on coordinating three reports, those would be the membership, the English learner in special education, and the allowing of funding to be attached to each of these dates, so that if a report is made, if it's logical to get funding with that new student count, that that can be attached, that it looks like that could be cleared for that, so that's good. And then the other area we're looking at is to make recommendations which should make the APR, or the Annual Progress Report, more user-friendly for the professional educator, and the Compass, more user-friendly for the non-educator. And for those that don't know, Compass is an online tool by the Department of Ed that it's really, it's accessible to anyone. You just go to their site and find the Compass thing, and then you can go, and it gives a snapshot of districts and schools for kind of a where we are and where we're headed. Some people use that to compare different schools, or to see progress a school has made, or a district's made, so that is really, Compass is open to anyone to look at. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Tricia. I open it up to our fellow board members. If you have any questions about some of the material that Tricia just covered. Okay, wonderful. If you do, I know it's always open, feel free to contact Tricia. And I know Mike has a little report he'd like to share as well about the CRC.
Thank you. As the designated representative on the Carmel Redevelopment Commission, I'll just try and kind of give reports as to what's happening and exciting things that are happening in our community. Bids are going out for the Park East Garage at City Center. That's one of the future development phases at City Center. In terms of the Palladium, there was some interior repair work done to the dome, and landscaping, limestone has been placed, and while they were hoping to get plants and that type of stuff in, it looks like we're going to be waiting till the spring to get the Palladium fully landscaped. And then the final thing to report is negotiations are continuing for the Party Time Site, which is a major site between the Arch District and City Center, and that's part of the mayor's plan to make that a corridor between the two. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mike. Questions from fellow board members? If you have a park board to report, please share.
The park board is progressing as well, but the dog park is open, everything is working. But one of the things I did want to report and pass on some information to Nick, too, and it just popped into my head, at our last board meeting, we have had an audit for handicap accessibility within all the parks and on all the trails and everything, where they identify the places where we need to work to make it more accessible, such as if you have a ballpark or something like that, you have to have access to a certain percentage of them. And in the process of doing that, they also looked at our schools, because they house the ESC program, and so they might have, they have some stuff that they were going to share with you, and I didn't know if they'd contacted you yet or sent any part of the report, but if they haven't, I keep reminding them at every meeting to make sure they include you guys in the loop, because there were some places within the schools where we might need to address some issues.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions? Pam and I are working very diligently with policy, and, well, no, not really, but with that, we will bring to you a recommendation at our next meeting on maybe to recodify our system. Yes, please.
One more little quick report, that the Carmel Education Foundation had the Ghost and Goblins run on Saturday, and I have no idea on official numbers, but it looked like there are a lot of people having fun and walking around, and it was beautiful weather.
We had reported 2,100.
2,100.
I had the great privilege to announce, and Mike was a runner.
Tricia was a volunteer.
Tricia was a volunteer.
And Scott was.
I stood.
Gorgeous day.
And my husband stood.
Beautiful day. Twenty, I heard 2,100.
Excellent.
The beauty of that is they're maintaining, this, three years in a row, they've been just above 2,000, and that's good, to maintain that for a run.
I thought I heard that it was a record turnout, by about 100 participants.
That's great.
And while we're talking about that, they also made the announcement that this is going to be the, next year will be the 50th anniversary for the Carmel Education Foundation, and I believe it was one of the first, if not the first in the state, so that is something that I think we as a school board need to put on our to-do list to recognize that next year.
I fully support that, and perhaps we can, I'd be happy to have a conversation with the executive directors to see how we can best support that. One thing that just pops into my mind is to help support them through the Fourth of July Parade, when they celebrate their 50th year. We also celebrate our Teacher of the Year, she's always on the fire truck, and perhaps we can all be involved in that as well. I had that opportunity this summer, and we might want to expand that.
You can bring my trumpet.
You can bring your trumpet.
Wow.
Are there other, any announcements that we'd like to make before we adjourn? Okay, with that, meeting adjourned.